Call the meeting tomorrow. Please rise.
We're gonna start with the students. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight we have two senior, a senior and a junior student. I'd like to call up Tyler and Maya, please.
You do this first?
Please rise.
Tyler Higgins is a senior student from Lowell. He's enrolled in the Design and Visual Program. He's currently involved in the Drama Club and has performed in a number of our school productions and holiday shows. Maya Medina is a junior from Lowell. She's enrolled in the Cosmetology Program and is a member of the varsity cheerleading and softball teams. She also enjoys doing community service with the school. I'd like to invite Tyler and Maya to join Chairman Moran to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
All rise.
.......................................................................................... Yeah. That's good.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you.
Good job. Thank you. Everybody's all good. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Now...
Thank you.
So... Roll call.
Mr. Giggie? Mr. Giggie?
Here.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yep.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu? Mr. Lemay? Mr. Booton?
Here.
Mr. Tatsias?
Here.
Mr. Moran?
Yeah. This meeting is being recorded. Mr. Booton, any public appearance today?
Nobody's registered to speak, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Let's see. School Committee Communications. I've received correspondence from the Great Lowell Teachers Organization that they would like to begin negotiations, a success agreement. Just want to pass that on to you. And report to the student rep.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Gabriel Penney, and this is the meeting of December 14th, 2017. For organizations and clubs of Great Lowell Technical High School, the freshman and sophomore class hosted their third annual Community Spaghetti Dinner on November 16th from 5:00 to 7:00 PM in the cafeteria. Students from both classes would stay after school to help set up and serve food. Tickets are $10 each and were sold at the door. They are looking forward to hosting another successful event next year. The Outing Club visited the New England Aquarium on Saturday, November 18th. They also plan to explore Quincy Market. The Great Lowell Technical High School pep rally occurred November 22nd in the gymnasium during periods 3, 4, 10, and 11. A performance from our cheerleading team and dance club took place. We also hosted our annual Student vs. Staff Basketball Game. Student Council has planned our Great Lowell Technical High School Spirit Week for November 16th up until November 22nd. Spirit Days include Thursday, November 16th Squad Day, Friday, November 17th Boston Sports Day, Monday, November 20th Monarch Monday, Tuesday, November 21st Shot Pride Day, Wednesday, November 22nd Griffin Day Blue and Gold. Skills USA students attended the Fall Leadership Conference, November 19th up and through the 21st, where they will, they had participated in leadership workshops and activities to help members learn skills and tools which they can bring back to their chapter. They are also hosting an annual community service to write letters to our alumni and friends serving away from home this holiday season on December 6th after school. On Saturday, November 25th, Great Lowell students volunteered with the City Lights Parade in Lowell. We will also have our holiday float on display. The National Technical Honor Society induction ceremony took place November 30th at 7:00 in the lecture hall. We will be inducting 43 new members for the 2017 through 2018 school year. The yearbook staff has been meeting weekly on Mondays after school, and we are currently working on designing the cover for the class of 2018 yearbook. The junior class successfully planned junior prom for December 1st at Lenzies in Drakett. Tickets were sold. Project Purple is running a candy fundraiser to raise money for students to participate in drug-free activities. They hosted pictures of Santa on Saturday, November 18th at the craft fair. As for Great Lowell's athletics, nearly 500 athletes tried out for one of our winter programs. Indoor track kicked off their season on December 6th and will look to an exciting new addition to our winter sports offerings this and for many seasons to come. Wrestling opened up on December 9th with a quad meet at Wilburn and will be competing in the always tough Wilmington Holiday Tournament on December 16th. The Swim and Dive Program once again saw a large number of candidates come up for the team and will open their season on Friday, December 15th at home against Blue Hills. Boys' basketball dropped their opener against rival Tinsborough by one point on a buzzer beater by the Tigers on December 8th. The boys' team will look to get on track this week with games at Minuteman and Innovation Academy before heading into the annual Winter Fest 20. Girls' basketball will open up this week with a home game against Minuteman before traveling to NDA for an always competitive league showdown. The winter cheer team is starting to take shape and will look to defend their CAC league title at the competition again this season. Thank you.
Thank you, Gabriel.
Good job.
Good job. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
If I may, I just want to just add on to something that the girls' basketball team did win last night.
Yes.
So that was very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, um, so I run the 1,000 meters and the 4x4, and in both events, for the 4x4, my team came first, and as for the 1,000 meters, I accomplished, I was able to run a 311 and 303, and both of which I came first.
Wow. Congratulations. That's impressive.
Awesome.
Very good. I'll never try to catch you.
How were your grades?
Um, great. Um, I'm in National Technical Honor Society, so...
All right. Keep up the good work all around.
All right. Approval of the minutes for the November 16th. This door here. Joe, that's been on.
Mr. Giggie?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes. Report of the treasurer.
Make a motion, wave the reading.
Mr. Giggie?
Yes.
Mr. Giggie?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes. Motion to approve the expenditures for the sum of $3,474,108 allocated as follows.
Motion.
That's it.
Mr. Giggie?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes. Report of General Counsel. I'm gonna take...
Four members of the committee, I know there is an executive session posted, I would make my report at that time.
We're gonna take it out of order.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Report of the Superintendent Director.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First item on the report is a draft copy of the superintendent's performance calls. I have listed there for you to review, look at, and provide feedback for me so I can provide a final copy hopefully within a month. Before I start and talk about some of the goals, I want to mention an accompanying sheet that's attached to this document in your packet from DESI that talks about the process for new superintendents in terms of providing their goals. One of the major recommendations in the document is for the superintendent to gather evidence and feedback throughout a school year before they start to provide some goals. At this point, I'm comfortable enough to be able to, have evaluated the district the last four months, to be able to provide a draft for you and for myself and for the education community. So I thought it was important for me to go forward and do this even though the recommendation was to wait, you know, somewhere towards the end of a first-year process. The goals are similar to the state, obviously the state requirements. They are SMART goals, talking about the three state inundated areas of professional practice, a student learning goal, and four, uh, three district improvement goals. Again, these are draft copies for you to look at. I'm hoping that within the next month you can provide me some feedback of some of these goals and I can incorporate it into a final draft and start working towards these goals and my performance goals moving forward. I have shared these with the administration in turn because they have to provide their own goals. So we've talked informally about some of the things that I've anticipated to put in my performance goals so they're able to match up somewhat in their goals for their evaluation. The first two goals, the professional practices and learning goals, are very common language you would find in those type of goals. If you look at many superintendents that would provide these goals for a first-year superintendent in a district, they'd be similar. The professional practice goal talks a lot about looking at the different stakeholders, assessing critical needs, finding the strategies and goals and how I would address those effectively and the measures we would use to assess the progress. The student learning goal is really about trying to get students and classroom instruction being done at a proficient level. The district improvement goals are a little bit more the ability to tailor that to the particular school district. And the three that I've posted there for you to look at is looking at, obviously the first one, maintaining momentum during this leadership transition and providing that stability going forward after a major leadership change here in the district. And the fourth and fifth goal is improving and putting together and developing an enrollment strategy. It's something that many people have talked about here. Many of you have given me some informal feedback about that and trying to provide fiscal stability around that enrollment strategy. And then finally, I recognize the fact that we've just made a major renovation in the building, and to be able to keep the physical plant improved over a period of time is somewhat important to our school district to be able to keep that physical improvement and stability of the building in place. I'm very open to any feedback you have about an additional goal or revising these goals moving forward, so I ask over the next month, if it's a little bit longer, that's fine, to be able to give me some feedback so I'm able to put together some goals. I can entertain a question if you'd like about these. Uh, no.
Number one.
Thank you. Next item on the, on the agenda is the Cooperative Education Report, our monthly cooperative education report. We have currently 178 seniors. I know some kids are ready to go out right after the break, I'm being told. Many kids right in January going out for cooperative education. We're about the same percentage that we were last year, slightly down. The reports, obviously you've seen the report many, many times, it's included in the package. Item number three is a request and information about waitlist by town, city in the packet. I try to break that down as simply as possible. Thanks Cheryl Goslin for her help in putting those numbers together also.
Mr. Espinola?
I, I think it's important for our viewers at home that if there is a Drakett person that leaves Drakett, uh, leaves the school or comes in from the school, it doesn't necessarily mean that another Drakett person would take their spot. I'm, I'm getting some feedback from the open house that's scheduled, and again, like this time every year, our community is not really too satisfied with not being able to come to the open houses, so I would like to make sure that people that are watching this, that they know that there isn't a set number of students that are able to come from each community. And, and, and it seems like there's, there's a perception out there that there's X amount from Lowell, X amount from Drakett, X amount from Dunstable, X amount from Tinsborough, and that's not the case. So I'd just like to say that to people that, that may be watching, that that's not the case, and it's totally random every year where we end up on how many kids come from each community. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Booton?
I, when I got the report, I, I looked at it on Monday, but I spoke to the superintendent offline, and one of my questions was, I thanked him for the report, it's gonna be helpful, and I asked him what the number is right now on the scale of the 130 potential points, and he told me it was at 79 as far as where our acceptance is right now. So I, I think it's important that parents know, you know, 79 or an 80 score out of 130 points isn't something difficult to overcome, and I would encourage their students to apply if they're interested. So thank you for the report, Mr. Superintendent. Did you say Ms. Goslin helped you?
She did always.
What's that?
She always has.
She did the whole thing. Thank you both.
Report of the business manager.
Good evening. So today we're just going to go over the budget timeline and update you as to where we stand, what we've done, and what we have to do. The superintendent met with the administrators and discussed program changes, any new programs they wanted to add or anything to delete. Then we all met as a team. We did a first round and a second round. The superintendent and I went through all of the updates on the budget with all of the potential raises and all of those things, and now we're going to draft it all up, make it pretty, and have it to him by this week. Then we wait, and we, we wait for the governor to release their house budget in January. We make changes accordingly. We'll finalize all of our changes to make sure that we're, we're within the parameters. We'll have a finance subcommittee meeting with you. The superintendent will present the budget in March. We'll have another finance subcommittee meeting. After you adopt the meeting, I mean, I'm sorry, after you adopt the budget in March, we'll go to the Dunstable, Tinsborough, and Drakett town meetings. Any questions on this? That's it?
Thank you.
Old business. New business?
Excuse me.
Yeah.
Just on one of the items, on old business, could I speak on that? Three things that I just want to bring up, that we, we're going to do something with the Athletic Hall of Fame, and I think a lot of these things kind of cased it a little slower than possible because of a lot of the work that was being done here. We'll reactivate that and try to come in with a better answer for when this could come to fruition, and that should not be a long period of time at this point. The Kula Harris dedication is another, one of those areas that kind of get lost in the shuffle for a lot of different reasons. There was a lot of international travel done there with the family and, but I think we can add and escalate and put this on our top burner and we can get that done within the next report or so. At any rate, I'll bring some type of report in for those groups of when it is a reasonable time and when it can, it kept, be accomplished. A lot of the work has been done, but we just have to unify it so that we can, you know, go on from there. The other one was the superintendent's wall, and this will be the last one I'm gonna speak on, and basically it was that any time a superintendent retired, they would give him some dedication or some recognition on the wall that was, that is on the steps going into the school. Now, we can't, there's a lot of problems with this. We've done a lot of work on this, but many of these people have passed, they're not with us anymore, they're not living in this area, and it becomes a situation that there really is no contact that we can talk with. If you look at the school, and I think there is two superintendents that have been recognized. The others have passed, moved on to the other side of the country, and we're having problems with that. So I think we can re-address that, and that's the third and fourth and fifth items that we talked, talked about in this area, and at the next meeting, we can have some positive action that when is a good time to get at least the Kula Harris situation and the Athletic Hall of Fame timeframe that we could actually do the work to get those in position. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Booton?
Mr. Chairman, I think we can remove number seven, number nine, and number 10. The superintendent has answered the exploratory shop selection process and where, who received what for their picks. 10 is the utilities that was given at the last meeting. Number nine, my only concern about removing that one, I don't know if it's gonna come up for discussion, but I think if it does, we can speak about it in new business. I don't think it'd be anything we'd have to vote on, so I'm comfortable taking that off. And then, so I'll start with those three, and then I want to go to number eight. Does anybody object to those?
No, that's fine.
Okay, we can remove those three. As far as number eight, I, I like it on there, and I was just gonna ask the superintendent under new business if I could, if we're on to new business yet, for a report either the January or February meeting. Where we're at for new grants for this year that we've applied for, that motion was to get what we had for last year, if we can see if we're applying, even if you can put them side by side, what we applied for last year, what we're gonna apply for, have applied for this year, to see if there's anything new. Thank you.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Superintendent, have you taken any steps on number 11?
The number 11 is still in progress. We've, we've done some work on it, we've had one company come in, we have another company scheduled to come in. I, I should have a full report in January on that.
Thank you.
Thank you. And new business, did you want to follow up on that?
Yeah, if I could just put that into new business, that if we can get an update on the grants that we've applied for this year and then include last year's grants, applied for and accepted. I'm really looking to see, are we going for more grants? I know when you're into view process, that was something you did well out in Peabody. I want to see what else you have our grant writer requesting to bring more money to the school. Thank you very much.
Good. Committee press a motion.
This is new business, Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
I would, I'm gonna submit this in a, in a form of a motion for the next meeting. My thoughts are that coming into the new election year in November, we're gonna be running in November now instead of May, November, and I know that you guys have always ran in November, and we've always been spread out everywhere. I have to say that I was kind of surprised when I took my seat in May and you guys had just realigned the offices and all that before I, my election happened. So, and you go along with it, it's not really a big deal, but, but what I'd like to try to do is make it a, a system where after November election, the following school committee meeting, we realign the offices and we vote on the offices so that it now becomes a, a standard operation type of a thing so that we're all in the same November now. I'll be the first candidate with a couple of other, I think you and Freddie, right, in November. So we come back in December and we make a, a vote to realign the offices and committee assignments the following meeting after the election in November. I'll be putting that in a motion for next month, and if anybody has any things to add to that, concerns or whatever, I, I just think it'll, it'll put everything in line with what's gonna happen.
All right. We'll take it under advisement.
So you're gonna vote for a policy change?
I don't even know if we have a policy now, do we?
I'll check.
It says we realign everybody in March.
I think I'll check with the policy mail to be sure that it...
So now we're all in November?
Right.
And I think it's more seamless after November's election. Some people may not be here, some people may be here, some, there might be new people, people might lose, and...
All winners, yeah.
Yeah. Thank you, Paul. You know that in March, but let's, let's face it, if you, if you, if you do your elections in March, especially in my case, come May, the person that I replaced, if, if that person was an officer, you'd have a spot open. So now that we, we go into November, in December, we know that everybody on the board is on the board for another year or two years, whatever, and we don't have to worry about it.
Makes absolute sense.
It does.
Let me just ask one question on that. I, I think I may have missed something. Are you saying that somebody is gonna be elected for a short period of time and then re-elected on the following? How, how is that gonna go again?
So currently, we realign the board in March.
Yes.
And then there is another election, citywide, statewide, not statewide, uh, citywide and townwide election in November.
Yeah.
So somebody could be aligned into a position in March, this coming March? It may not be here?
Yeah.
For the following March? So next November, somebody might not be here.
This is a one, one time?
Nope, forever.
It's gonna happen all the time.
It'll be all in unison.
So I said we do it one more time in March?
Yeah.
And then we do it all, we change it after the next election in November.
Okay, so they...
And then it's concurrent?
Then it runs every Nov-...
Every November. Every, the following meeting after the elections, so whatever, whatever the meeting is.
December meeting effective for January?
January 18th, yeah.
So that makes sense.
Yeah.
Thank you. Very good. So we're gonna come out of the meeting?
We're gonna make, yes, we're gonna do a recess?
Yeah.
And then we'll come back?
Yeah.
There'll be, will there be any votes after the...
It may be one in executive session.
So we'll have to come out to vote? So does the camera people stay? That's the question.
If, if there is a vote, it would be regarding pending litigation, so it may not be appropriate to announce it, other than the fact that there was a vote.
Okay, so we're just gonna come back for adjournment?
To adjourn, correct.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
We're gonna be discussing the litigation that's pending with the Attorney General's office right now in the workers' comp cases. Could there be anything that we come out of executive session that we can give to the public that we'd want to be able to announce?
That's what we just said, huh?
No. Not about the vote, but if there's information that we want to tell the community, teachers, parents?
I don't think so.
I think the district, as well as the AG, has been pretty transparent to date as far as what's coming out. I, I don't...
I don't know if we're getting anything new in the meeting that we would want to put out. If we make a vote in the executive session to release information, does that have to be also voted on in public?
I would be asking the committee to release any new information with the meeting.
Okay.
All right, 10-minute recess.
So we need to do something, no?
No, we're just...
We're good. Don't we move to go into executive session?
When we go into it. Right now it's a recess.
Just a recess. Motion for recess.
No.
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes. Now it's a recess. 10-minute recess. 10-minute recess.